Good morning, everyone. Welcome to Perth County Council this 21st day of March. I'd like to call our meeting to order. Firehead for a moment of reflection. Thank you. Read our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that Perth County is situated on the traditional land of the Ananase Bay, who have a longstanding relationship with the land and water throughout the region. We honour and respect the history, languages and culture of the diverse Indigenous, Matia and Inuit people who call this territory home. As a county, we have a responsibility for reconciliation and continued stewardship of the land on which we live and work. You have the covenry interest. You can disclose that now or as the meeting goes along. We have 21 items on our consent agenda. Is there any item anyone would like?
Oh, okay.
Sorry, I jumped over that. Confirmation of the agenda first. Anything anyone would like to add, change? If not, we have a motion that the March 21st, 2024 Agenda be approved by council or seconded by councillor Trunkowski. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, now we'll go to consent agenda. There's 21 items on the consent agenda. Is there any item anyone would like Paul? Do they have questions on? Councillor Mackenzie?
I would support 615 on a body. Had that discussion a number of times over the years and think it's something that's considered and should be looked at.
Okay, anyone else?
I was.
Same one? Okay. Anyone have anything else? No? Okay. So we have a motion that council receives the consent agenda items, 6.1.1 to 6.21, with the exception of 6.15, and approve the March 7, 2024 Council. Moved by councillor Smith, seconded by councillor Aitchison. All those in favour? Carried. Walter, do you have anything to add to?
I think, you know, the history is that they used to be separate and then they merged them. And I thought it was going fairly well, but obviously they must have had a disagreement or different theories or whatever. And then they split them apart. And then I believe it was two years ago, there was talk again of merging and they were going to look at it. And I've never heard anything more. So I think there has to be advantages to putting them both together. Common sense and put them together and, you know, they can split it up. The different engineers and roads superintendents can go to the one end or go to one area and the rest can go to the other. In the past, they were in very similar conferences as far as for councillors and, you know, mayors and that, very similar topics. So I just think it's a good idea to look at. I will move that.
Okay. By councillor Mackenzie, a seconder. Councillor McDermott. Want to read what you have?
Yeah, the council sent a letter supporting the town of Gardinge requesting return of combining Roma and Ogra conferences.
So can we copy that to both Roma and Ontario Good Roads Board of Directors?
Okay, any other comments, questions? All in favour? Carried. Okay, we have no public meetings, hearings or delegations. So we're going to move right to staff reports. And the first thing on our staff report is under planning and we have an update on the new draft official plan, public consultation. I believe we have Andrea with us this morning.
Matt Alexander.
And Matt Alexander is going to join us on the screen. Good morning, Andrea. Welcome. And just give a second here for Matt to get in. There he is. Hi, good morning, Matt. Welcome to Perth County Council and the floor is yours. Who's going to speak? Matt or Andrea?
Matt's going to be presenting and then we can, both of us can answer any questions, council.
Okay.
Hello, good morning, council. My name is Matt Alexander. I'm a practice lead with WSP and I've been working with Andrea Hackler on the new Perth County official plan for past number of years, working with the county on this official plan. So the purpose of this item is to provide an update on the public consultation activities that have taken place in the last couple of months related to the new official plan. As you'll recall, on December 21st, 2023, we presented the draft official plan to council, including land use schedules. And we received direction from council at that point to undertake the public consultation required to advance the project towards potential adoption. So in doing so, we scheduled and held four different public open houses, which were held on February 7th and 8th, February 12th and February 15th. The attendance at those open houses was 56 people for the first one, 141 in the second, 157 in the third and 271 on the fourth open house. And that is likely an undercount because that is based on the people who chose to sign in when they arrived. The open house meetings were a hybrid type format, so there were presentation boards in person as well as county staff in person. But I made my presentations virtually the same way that I'm doing here today. We received, sorry, the content of the presentation was to provide a pretty high level overview of the policies of the draft official plan and the updates to the land use schedules. If you just excuse me for a moment, I need to get a drink of water. I'm just gonna. And so I had a presentation that I gave that provided some of that background information as well as content related to the official plan. And then it was open for questions and comments from members of the public. The content of the questions and comments fell into a number of different themes or categories. So we heard about concerns related to agriculture, concerns about the clarity of the policies, a lot of questions about, you know, what does this mean? What are the impacts of this? How is this going to be implemented? Some questions about growth management and where new growth is going to be allocated and directed within the county. Natural environment mapping and policies were the biggest issue that came up. But we also heard about on-farm diversified uses and requests for clarity as to how the policies would treat those uses. And a handful of site-specific questions and requests. And following the open house, we also received, or the open houses, we received a number of questions, follow-up questions in writing as well. If you like, I can spend some time talking in more detail about the nature of some of the comments. I would say that in general, the comments help to demonstrate that the policies and the mapping weren't necessarily as clear to the common resident as we would like or like as, as clear as they could be. So there was a lot of misunderstanding about what the nature of, the intent of the policies are and a misunderstanding of how the policies work together and what's permitted. So specifically in the natural environment subject matter, people have this concern, and it's very common across Ontario, that when a natural environment feature is identified on a property, that it sterilises or restricts development and prevents development from happening on the property and on a land adjacent to the natural features. We attempted, to the best of our ability, to respond to people's questions and concerns at the open houses to clarify that any existing uses that are occurring on lands that are now identified with natural environment features, those existing uses are permitted to continue. And that's something that is entrenched in the Planning Act as well as in the provincial policy statement and the official plan policies. So specifically agricultural uses are explicitly identified in the draft official plan policies and the provincial policy statement as not being affected by environmental protection designations. And it's sort of a type of prioritisation that the province has directed, that, you know, protection of natural features is very important. It's not as important as preserving those agricultural uses. And so that's something we tried to clarify and emphasise with folks at the public open house meetings. But we did also hear about mapping that might not be accurate. And so we invited people to provide their specific circumstances, their specific property information to staff so that any inaccurate mapping can be corrected before it comes back to council for a decision on adoption. And so the project team, myself, my team and the county staff are working on clarifying policies so that it is easier to read, easier to understand and provides, in some cases, examples of policy impacts and, and examples of how the policies would be implemented once adopted. And, and so we are taking all of the comments received very seriously, looking at what the issue is there and whether we can revise the policies to meet those, to address those concerns. There is a limit to that. So the provincial policy statement does require that the county identify natural heritage features and natural heritage system in the official plan. So there's, there's no avoiding the identification of features that exist. How we, how we identify that, whether it's through a standalone designation on properties or as an overlay on the property with the underlying designation of agriculture or anything else, that is an option to the county, depending on how you want to address that. And how we explain it or how we present the information and the policy direction is also very much up to the county. And as I said, we're working on trying to make that clearer and easier to use. Just checking the memo that I, that I submitted on this item. Essentially, there are, there are some options that we're going to be working with the project team on to revise the draft official plan and, and to make that available, that revised version available for public review well in advance of a decision so that everybody has the opportunity to review those revised policies and mapping, share it with, within their networks, provide comments and provide us with an opportunity to make any last minute further revisions before it comes back to council for a decision. And so I'm happy to answer any specific questions that you might have. And I'm sure Ms. Hackler can, can help with that as well. But I think that's what I wanted to focus on, on this presentation this morning. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to add anything, Andrea, or not? Let's go to.
I think we'll go to questions and then probably I can shed some light on anything else that people are wondering about.
Okay, so questions, comments? Councillor Kastner?
Hello, good morning, Warden Eggers and colleagues. Thank you. I, my question is almost mundane, but you know, so much of public documents that we put out can be rather technical in their language intensity. And I'm wondering what efforts you are making to try to reduce, reduce the grade level and simplify the language so that it is a lot more accessible to the general public?
Thank you through you, Mayor, Chair. The, it is a challenge within the planning profession because we are working within a very complex system. So we have a number of overlap in policies that don't always align 100%. And it's our job as planners to try to find the, the common ground and, and express those policies in a way that's useful. And because it can be, and at times literally litigious, there is a, a need for things to be specific, which means that it becomes complex and you end up with a 200-page document. What we can do in official plans is try to put interpretive explanations in the policy that provide kind of a, a plain language summary of the policy. The, the risk and the, the balance that we always try to find is that we don't want to be, we don't want to oversimplify to the point of misleading. And that can be difficult when there's all these little nuances. And, you know, for example, the word development has a very common meaning to, to everybody and encompasses, you know, building a building or clearing land or subdividing land and all changing uses within buildings, all, all kinds of stuff like that. But it has a specific definition in the provincial policy statement and in official plans, which excludes farm practices. And so when people hear that development is not permitted within a natural environment feature and they are a farmer who needs to develop their land in a certain way, they hear that they can't farm their land properly. And that's just not the case because there is that exception. So we are looking at ways of having more plain language introductory sections to the official plan or providing examples that give people a bit of an easier way to understand because we always talk about these sort of abstractly in policy. And that's the approach that we're trying to take so that people can just sort of find the section, read an opening paragraph, understand what the point is. And then if they need to dig down and get into the nitty-gritty of it, the policies are there and address all the complexity.
Aitchison?
Now, now you're good. Now you're good.
Walter Aitchison? Sorry, Jim.
We went blank there for a while. I wasn't hearing and I didn't want to say anything. Okay, I've got a few questions actually, and I've had all kinds of rape pairs phone to me since the public meetings. And I had phoned in to get some answers, but they've been too busy to get back, so I'm going to have to ask them right now. So one of the number one things with farmers is water courses and drainage ditches. And I've asked this question several times and no real definite answer. And the day after our last public meeting in Perth East, got a memo from, or an email from the Environment Minister, and they talked about water courses. And their definition was if it didn't run water 12 months of the year, it wasn't constituted as a water course, i.e. a drainage ditch. So there's hardly a drainage ditch in the province that would run 12 months of the year. In fact, right now it's so dry that the drainage ditches are pretty near empty. So, and also in that email, it talked about reduced setbacks. And I know I did forward that on to Andrea, as did others. But when I'm reading this update here, I don't see reduced setbacks on any of these figures in this update. But they were talking down to 30 metres from the province here and that would have been the day after the public meeting in Perth East, I received that. So could somebody answer that question? Because the, the farmers want a clear, and clarity is a problem, Matt, there's no doubt about it. Farmers want that clearly defined and explained in this official plan.
Thank you for that through Warden. I think Ms. Hackler can talk about how the water courses are mapped in the, the natural environment mapping, but I'll, I'll speak to the setback question. So the official plan, I think it provide, it may provide some minimum setbacks to certain features, but there is a, a misunderstanding between what's considered adjacent lands to a feature. And we've seen this come up again and again. So adjacent lands are literally the, the land that's adjacent to an actual feature. And those are triggers for additional studies to determine whether or not a proposed development will have a negative impact on that feature. The adjacent lands is not a setback. And so you'll see in the official plan, definition of adjacent lands of 120 metres from certain features or 50 metres from other features. And all that is, is it says, if you're doing something within that distance, then you need to assess what the impact is going to be on the natural feature. And through that assessment, you would determine what the appropriate setback is. In some cases, it might be 15 metres from a water course, depending on what the proposal is. And so there's no way to put in a standard minimum setback because every type of use has a different type of impact. If it's, you know, paving a parking lot or doing a, an auto repair station or something like that, the potential for runoff that's, has a negative impact is much greater than if it's a vegetable stand, for, for example, or, or a house, just a house. And so we can't have a, a standard setback in the official plan, but we do have these adjacent lands distances and there is no reduced adjacent lands distance there. The other element is conservation authority regulated areas. And so those get down to something like 30 metres within which you would need a permit from the conservation authority to, to do site alteration or building or something like that. So there's, again, talking about the complexity of things, there's a number of different terms and a number of different circumstances and types of, I don't know, just different concepts that we, that we work with. And unfortunately, it's not always super clear, the, the little nuances between each of these things. So that is, that's a really good example of the concepts and the policies that we need to try to clarify for folks so that they understand how they interact with the features that are on or adjacent to their properties.
Yeah, because most of the questions I get are from actually practising agricultural people, which, you know, some of those setbacks will affect them more. Another question I get all the time about is connecting links. And you want to, you've designated those natural environment. You got to protect the habitat. So I need clarity, what is a connecting link? And I'm going to give you an example. The neighbour next to me has a piece of bush on one side of his farm and then there's a, half the width of the farm is worked ground. And then we come to my bush, which is on the west side of the farm. So is the land between those two bushes considered a connecting link and is that designated natural environment?
So through you, Warden. Of course, I can't speak to the specifics, but in general, if the area is designated as natural environment, but it's a, but it's a farm field, you know, not one of those specific features, then the principle is that that's considered a, a connecting link or it's considered linkages, linkages and corridors, those sorts of terminology. What that, what that means is it's an acknowledgement that the wildlife or vegetation or what have you that exists within the, the features themselves, so like the bush, they don't, they aren't static. They don't stay in place. They don't stay within the lines. They move between spaces and everything else. So if you were to put something in the middle of that, it's likely to have some kind of impact. The thing to keep in mind, as I mentioned, is that if it's a farm and the farmers want to farm that land, then there's no trigger for them to do anything different. They're, they're permitted to continue to farm that. And we've, we've tried to make that as explicit as possible in the official plan. There's a, a paragraph that specifically says that the natural environment designation does not have the effect of preventing farming from taking place. And so, you know, we can, we can still try to spell it out more clearly. But at the end of the day, unfortunately, there is some misinformation that has been spread by folks, either through misunderstanding or through, you know, a fundamental disagreement with the, with the principle of having land use planning regulations existing. And, and there's a limit to what we can do to, to make people understand what the impact is here. So we will try to clarify that and what the nature of the linkages are. But the idea is it's a, it's a trigger and it doesn't prevent farm practices from taking place.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else, Jim?
Yeah, I've got a couple. I had a question here a couple of times this last week. And the question was, how many acres of natural environment have been added from what was originally there?
Through you, Warden. This came up a number of times in the open houses. We responded, I believe that the, the difference between the initial mapping that was originally provided to folks in 2019 and then the revised mapping that was prepared for the draft official plan in 2023 was something like 10, 10,000. Actually, Andrea can probably speak to this in more detail. Either 10,000 acres or 10,000 hectares. Since then, we've further clarified or further refined mapping. And I'm going to pass it to Andrea to, to speak in more detail on that one.
Thanks, Matt. So through the Warden to councillor Aitchison's question. So I think there has been a significant amount of focus on the actual number of acres that have changed and then also a focus from the 99 official plans, the current designations that we have in place, to the proposed designations that we're looking to put in place. And I think it's really important for everyone to understand that that mapping was based on M&amp;R mapping that was provided to us, based on 1985 and 1990 mapping. Since then, we obviously, our systems are far more sophisticated. And then with that, in 2014, the PPS changed and asked municipalities to identify systems, so natural heritage systems, as opposed to just, you know, a woodland or a wetland. And so that's where, you know, there has been an increase. Mapping has changed significantly from what people have seen to what they're seeing now. And so that has caused, you know, some, some pause for many people. But I mean, I think the, you know, what Matt's saying too is that I think the policies are where the real focus should be. The policies, we're understanding based on the feedback that we receive, that there's not enough clarity with the policies. It's causing confusion. It's making people feel like they can't continue their normal farm practices. It's making people concerned about, you know, whether they could get a building permit to build a barn on their property. We've been dealing with a lot of site-specific questions with respect to, to properties and woodlands. And generally speaking, when we are able to speak to the people one-on-one and we're able to look at their property and walk them through it, it generally ends in, okay, so I can still build my barn. I can still continue to farm up and to, up to, you know, the woodland. Or I can still, you know, the, the drainage ditch can still be dredged under the Drainage Act as per usual. So I think we should, I, I mean, I think those, yeah, there is those, those numbers there. GIS has since also provided us with percentage-wise, what the coverage is for each designation in the county, which we can provide to council. But the actual natural environment designation overall ends up being an overall, I think it's, off the top of my head, I think it's around 8%. And I think the agricultural designation is, is over 85% of, of the entire county. So I think, I think that's generally where we should, we should be putting our focus is, is the policies refining them. As Matt had indicated too, coming up with different examples. There's some other municipalities that I've been speaking with too, that have been working on exemption policies for natural environment designations. And so we've been looking into that as well.
Okay, and I, one, one comment back to the connecting link. We, we crop and we have bushes on virtually every farm down the road. And when you go out to combine in the fall, we know the animals don't just trample through one spot. Because if you want to come out and see what crop loss we would incur, given fall. given fall, you might be a little surprised. The wild turkeys and the deer clean up the wheat and the beans. And the raccoons and the deer clean up the corn. We'll lose several acres just flattened or destroyed with natural habitat. And that's what's got farmers somewhat concerned about all these extra connecting links and the number of acres being added to the natural environment designation. And one last question for now. So the number one question, well, I get two asked questions, and I think Counselor Orr is going to bring up one of them, so I'm not going to bring that up. And that has to do with woodlots and tree bylaws. But the other one is the mapping. And I believe it was stated at one of the public meetings that the mapping would be back up within a couple of weeks online. And I'm only going to repeat the comments made to me. I'm not pointing fingers at anyone. But when they can't seem to get the mapping back up online, and a lot of these farmers own significant numbers of properties, they don't feel like tramping into town and meeting with the planner and trying to go over every property they have because they have them in all the different municipalities. They want to be able to go online at night, look it up and see how it specifically affects each property they own. So you know, when they start telling me, well, like, what are you trying to hide? I said, well, nothing that I'm aware of, but it, you know, when, when the mapping comes down and they're not getting it back up, I can see why they're asking me that question. Because they do want to look at each specific prob, you know, property. And once this is approved, like, it's approved. So they want this thoroughly looked at before it goes passed by council. So can somebody address the mapping and when it's going to show back up?
Yeah, so through the warden to Counselor Acheson's question, that's a great question. It's a common question, and I think it's a fair question. We have been working on the mapping. We've been working closely with GIS. There are changes that we are still making before we want to launch it. In a meeting this week with GIS, they have indicated, based on the direction of council today, they can have the mapping ready within four weeks. If council chose to take an overlay approach as opposed to the designations, then they said that'll likely take them closer to seven or eight weeks to get it up. Obviously, with that, we had initially slated a public meeting for May sixteenth. And we obviously are not anticipating to make it to a May sixteenth meeting anymore because, as Counselor Acheson has pointed out, you know, we want to make sure there is this feeling of transparency. We're definitely not trying to hide anything. We want residents and landowners to be able to go in and look at their properties and not just agricultural properties. I mean, it potentially, you know, has effects within service settlement areas, around service settlement areas. There's new designations being, being changed or being introduced in those areas as well. And so I think definitely people should have the ability to look at that. So we had talked as staff as well. If we are introducing the mapping or reintroducing the mapping in four weeks, then we would like to have it available to the public, at least for another four weeks or so before we entertain another open house. And then from there, after the open house, then we would propose to move on to the public meeting, depending on how, how things are going. Just continue to gauge it, but that's kind of to give council like a, you know, a general idea of our timeline. We're definitely not trying to, you know, pull fast one or anything like that. We've been talking closely also with the province with respect to the new PPS that'll come out. And, and so there will be likely some more changes to the mapping that we're going to continue working on with the province with respect to allocation. And so we want to make sure that that's all in good order before we reissue that mapping. So it's not people not feeling like, oh, now they're changing it again. And I looked at it and I have to look at it again.
Through you, Warden, I would add that the, the draft land use schedules are on the county's website now. So it is a high-level, low-detail map, and it doesn't show all of the lot lines. But until that interactive mapping becomes available, the draft schedules that will be used to review or would be used to review applications once it's adopted, those are currently on the, on the county's website for the new official plan. And with that mapping, you can see where those natural environment areas are identified and locate your property, see if there's something nearby, and then follow up with questions about that with staff or with myself. And the, the mapping is organized by local municipality. So it is available to review at a certain level of detail. But I understand that the mapping is not in the same format that it was when the initial public consultation on that mapping was undertaken.
Okay, thanks. But the big thing is, most of the landowners around here, maybe got significant investments, they want the detail. They don't want an overview, they want the detail. So, and I, I was pleased to hear Andrea just say that they wouldn't be ready for the sixteenth of May. Because in all honesty, I honestly believe you'd be wasting your time if you don't have significantly more information for the landowners and property owners in Perth County. They, they didn't really think the maps, the overview maps you had on the walls back in the public meetings did anything for them because there was no detail as to individual specific areas. It was just an overview of the county. And that should be enough for me unless I come up with another one. Thank you.
If I can add to that, we also have been, anyone who has been contacting us, we have been providing them with a map of their property as zoomed-in version so they can take a closer look at it. The only thing is, is that we are saying it may be subject to change, and that's why we haven't reissued the viewer. And so we, we definitely are providing those to people.
Okay, before we go to the next person, there's a couple of things that Counselor Acheson brought up that I didn't feel we got totally answered. And that has to do with, we had a council meeting in February of twenty twenty-two, and at that meeting, we talked about taking out meadows, thickets and connecting links. Now, the meadows and thickets came out, but the connecting links didn't. And I'm wondering why that is. Because if they're not mandatory, why are they in there?
Through you, Warden, I'm not sure if Andrea can provide more detail on, on that. But part of the provincial requirements are to identify a natural heritage system. And a natural heritage system includes the features and linkages. And so there is a need to, there is a requirement to identify linkages. So Andrea, I don't know if you can elaborate on that.
So through to your question, the, yes, he's, I, I agree with Matt in that we are required to identify systems. And so those, those linkages, if they meet the requirements within the Perth Natural Heritage Systems Study, then there's a number of criteria that everything has to meet. And so if they do meet that, then they have been mapped. And then the meadows and thickets have been removed. And so that will be visible on, so we have had people contact us that had previously had natural environment designation on their property that was identified as, or fell under the criteria as the meadow and meadow or thicket. And so those have since been removed. So we've been sharing those with anyone that has contacted us, but that will be visible on the viewer when it is up and running.
And then the other thing that Counselor Acheson touched on was drainage ditches. Are they being taken out if there's no water flow? Someone want to answer that?
Sorry, through you, Warden. We're not, so WSP is not, did not prepare the mapping, so I can't, I can't speak to that.
Sorry, Matt. So through the warden to your question, so with respect to drainage ditches, if they met the criteria within the, the study, then they'll be mapped and it's likely more related to the fact that there would be vegetation around them. In cases where, for example, you know, people are farming right up to the edge of the drainage ditch, they should not necessarily be picked up as a, a natural feature, but we can definitely take a closer look at that.
Well, we need to do something to get these acres down because I'll tell you right now, I'm not supporting it with ten thousand acres coming in as a natural feature. So after we heard the outcry from the people, we need to come up with something. So who else? Counselor McDermott?
Yes, to the warden. To Jim's question, so a connecting feature could be an open field. Like you could have a woodlot here, a woodlot here, and how many acres between is being cultivated? So would that cultivated field be considered a connecting link?
Through you, Warden. Yes, in some cases, that's, that's the case. So when you look at the natural environment mapping on the draft land use schedules, you'll see that there are areas that don't necessarily have an obvious, you know, woodlot or wetland or other feature on there. But it's identified in recognition that some of the species that Counselor Acheson was talking about earlier moved between those areas. And so those would be negatively impacted by development other than a farm field, for example. And that's why those linkages are identified.
Okay. And the thickets, so I believe on my property, that's what was identified with thickets. So if I was to look at the map now, that wouldn't be on my property. It'd be taken off.
Through the warden to the question, so it would be, if, yeah, so if the feature no law, if the only criteria that it met were a meadow or thicket, then it should most likely be removed. If it meets other criteria described in the Perth Natural Heritage Study, then it would likely still be identified.
Okay, so if it's beside a bush, like it, it would be right beside a bush. So if it's right beside a bush, would that trigger it to a higher level? Would that mean it would still be there?
I, I think we have to look at it specifically. I'm not, I'm not quite sure.
Okay. And then the other problem was I've talked to people and they phoned in a long time ago and they wanted to talk and stuff like that, but evidently there was not enough time. And then unfortunately, could not get back to the, to the resident. And the problem is now it's passed, like, there's no more meetings or stuff like that. So I have a huge problem with that. And then
Through you, Warden, I can respond to that. So the, so residents are able to provide their comments at any time. The public open houses were an opportunity to specifically hear a presentation, review the display boards there. And it's, it's a type of, it's a public outreach that attracts a lot of people. And so that's a, it's a good opportunity to hear people's comments and everything. But those were not the only opportunities to provide comments. Anybody can submit comments directly to county staff or through any of, any of the counselors so that their comments and questions can be heard and responded to. And they have the ability to make those comments right up until the day that the official plan is adopted. So there's no cutoff for providing comments on this. So I encourage anybody to, to provide their comments in writing or on the phone at any time.
Okay, and in your, excuse me, in your report, it was on page eighty-six and page eighty-seven. It talks about, you know, the natural heritage features and the linkages and stuff like that. And it's talking about surface water and groundwater features. And a municipal drain would obviously be caught by that. So I have a, a lot of problems with your, you designate an area, that's fine. Then you have linkages, then all of a sudden you're down to municipal drain, which would be where I live. And now suddenly you've got this huge system. And my fear is that today is you've, you've got your policies that you can farm up to it, et cetera, et cetera. But it's tomorrow, like, what, what policies come tomorrow? And I know that would be crystal balling it and I don't expect you to answer. But, you know, I look at a place like Europe and I look at how their regulatory system continuously gets more onerous to the owner. And like my father, like, I don't know, maybe fifty years ago, he wanted to put in a pond and plant some trees. And I told him, no, no, we're not, because I could see the future where all of that was going to be was a problem for me in the future because it would be someone something the state would take more control over. So I'm just happy that it never got done. And it's unfortunate because it'd be really nice to have a pond and some trees now, but no way that that's going to happen when we keep coming up with this kind of stuff.
Okay, anyone else? Counselor Smith?
Yes, through the warden, Henry, you mentioned the exemption policies. Do those need to be applied for during this process? Can they be applied for after approval, one year, two years, three years? When, when can those policy, exemption policies be applied for?
I'm sorry, I missed the first part of the question.
Exemption policies?
Yeah.
Right, the, they need to be applied for during this process? Or can they be done after approval, one year from now, two years, or just any time?
Through the warden to the question, so the exemption policies would be policies that we would provide within the official plan. And so it's, it's not, it's not that, you know, you would be exempt from a designation. It would be more, the policies would be more clear around where an EIS wouldn't be required if a planning application were applied for.
To add to that, through you, Warden, yeah, there's no, there's no process of applying for an exemption from the natural heritage, natural environment policies. The way that those policies are implemented is if you come forward with something like a zoning bylaw amendment application or a proposal to sever a property, then there's a trigger to require you to do an additional study. But to continue using your land the way that it's already permitted to be used, there's no, there's no trigger to, there's no restriction on that. And there's no, like, application for an exemption. So it's, it's more of a passive thing. It's like, as of right, you're allowed to continue using your land the way that it's zoned and the way that you have been doing that already.
Okay, Counselor Duncan?
Thank you, through you, Warden. I've got a, a couple here. We've had some discussion about the drainage ditch issue, municipal drain issue. Jim brought up the fact that the, the province has changed their definition in the Conservation Authorities Act as to what they define a water course as. It's, it's definitely a wording change, there's no doubt about that. I think one of the things that I guess I'm concerned about, if we're going to designate municipal drains, natural environment, the adjacent land to that municipal drain then could restrict development on that land. If it doesn't restrict agricultural development on that land, then I guess I'm far less concerned. Because that's, to me, the biggest thing that could affect our farmers is whether or not they could build a, an agricultural structure on that land. So that's my first one. My second one is if, if we do want to look at municipal drains, we already have a classification system from A to F as to whether that drain flows water, when it flows water, whether it's intermittent or not. We could use that classification to classify all the municipal drains in the official plan. The, the data is already out there, the MECP has it. And my third one is a public meeting, the sixteenth of May, is a horrible idea for the agricultural community. So I'm glad that Andrea says we're not getting ready for that because I don't want to take the phone calls that I'll get from farmers saying that I can't come to a public meeting the sixteenth of May because I'm busy in the field. And that will just make it look like we're trying to do something without public input again. So I'm glad to hear that we need to push that public meeting back. Thanks.
Okay, anyone else? Counselor McDermott?
Just one thing on the drains and things like that. You also have to consider that Fisheries and Oceans Canada, they have a big finger in the pie here, I believe. And I think they're the ones that designate whether a municipal drain is the classification that Counselor Duncan was talking about. I'm not a hundred percent sure about that, but I think they have a huge say in drains now. Just adds more complexity to the problem.
Okay, anyone else? Counselor Orr?
Okay, I've got potentially five things to comment on. Maybe this is for Matt, but we talk about the provincial policy statement. I guess I was a little frustrated that we did do four open houses and then two days later, the conservation authority changes came in. Is that potentially going to happen again? For, we could go through a lot of work updating this and then the provincial policy statement overrules us? Do we not have heads up that they're working on something? Like, that's gotta be frustrating for you.
Through you, Warden. With this, this project began in 2019 and since then, we've had one major update to the provincial policy statement, as well as about three or four pretty significant updates to the Planning Act. It's a, it's a constantly moving target. And so the province did, they released a proposed provincial planning statement in the summer and held consultation on that. They have not announced when any revised version of that might come into effect. But we've heard that it may come into effect at some point before this summer. Typically, those changes include kind of a transition period where they've released it and they announce it will come into effect at a later date. So that municipalities and planners and everybody else has an opportunity to review and understand what the policies are going to be. The fact is, is that if, if the official plan was adopted today, a change to provincial policy could come in at any time before the minister makes a decision and the minister could make any kind of changes that they want to the official plan at that point. So what we've been advising our clients across the province is to keep working away, you know? It could, it could change at any moment. The province has not been as open about proposed changes and when they might come into effect as previous iterations of the government have been. So it is, it is sometimes a tense thing. But the best approach is to, to work away at your official plan or zoning bylaw or any other policies at your own pace to try to come up with the best document that you can for your local circumstances in keeping with the policies that apply in that moment. And then if there's any changes that come along, you know, maybe immediately after that, then we can do sort of a little assessment to see if we feel like a fundamental shift is required to reconsider the whole thing. But best case, best approach in my experience has been to, to do what's, to basically stay the course, do what's best for the county and then, and then see where it goes once it's in the province's hands. Because otherwise you're constantly changing and never actually reaching a conclusion and adopting a document.
Okay, some of these are from my fellow counselors as well. But in the FAQs, we use the words what's intended. I think some of them have a problem with that for the fact that I think our planning department's excellent now. But if you have staff changes, does it come down to one person's opinion? So I just, I just wanted to point that out, that, I mean, this is going to be policy, so it very much needs to be clear. I do like the examples and I really do appreciate the FAQs. I've been dropping those around and people, people do like them. So just pointing that out. I've had some comments since we're talking about it. Marginal land, and this one is something that's sensitive to me, that we, we have marginal land that's in the agricultural zone, that is not being farmed, hasn't been farmed for 25 years and yet there seems to be quite a bit of limitations on it. And I, I don't know if it would require a policy change for, or a different outlook for us to, to look at those lands and potentially plant trees for some of our farmers or use for housing. So I guess I'm still in the zone of we have, I, I would like to see a pipeline of housing for people given the opportunity to sever off a piece of land, if it makes sense. And I'm not talking about agricultural land. I'm, well, it's agricultural land. I'm not talking about farmed land. I'm talking about the marginal land. So I guess I'd just like to look at that policy. One of the other things when we're talking about input is just yesterday, I got an information email sent to me from the Builders Association looking for input, which I thought was interesting. I think Stratford has also started their update on their plan. So I'm wondering if it would help us, as I've heard, like I went to all the seminars, the four ones. And could we have each commodity from the pork producers, the cattle producers, the grain, the landowner group, the Builders Association? Would it be advantageous for us to reach out to them and specifically have them provide written comments? Because I know that a lot of them are talking. So please write it down, put it down, what you would like to see. And, and we will consider it because we are, we are asking for that. And then my last thing that I would felt for you, I felt for the planning department in a way through the four open houses was I think there was a lot of stuff that came out about the tree bylaw or the woodlots and that. And I'm hoping that this council will consider that we go and have a review of our tree bylaw, specifically potentially looking at an appeals process, specifically bringing it to the ag group and having the CAOs and the chief building officials. Because I think that there seems to be a lot of apprehension around what is allowed and what's not allowed. And it was even a learning lesson to me that it's not really planning for the tree bylaw, but more legislative services. And I should have known that along the way, but that became very clear. So I have worked with Lori this week to come up with potentially a motion to review the tree bylaw, but I'll wait for other comments as well.
Okay, who's next? Counselor Trunkowski?
No, thanks, Warden, through you. So to tie in with Counselor Orr's comments about requesting consideration of a tree bylaw review process, I wanted to weigh in, I guess, through my participation as the chair of the Agricultural Working Group and particularly with the stewardship program. So I prepared a bit of a, it looks like a statement, but there's a point to it. So if you can indulge me with my comment, I'll proceed. Going back, it's been a year since we've embarked on the start of the stewardship program. So a year ago, we had public meetings or public open houses and the general consensus from the public was that county support for a tree planting was something that the public would embrace. So a year later, to the present day, this public interest enthusiasm has been verified, given the number of applications submitted for the tree planting program. Some of this information is forthcoming in a more formal report to council later on. But for the necessity of this discussion, we had a total of 42 eligible applications submitted for the first round countywide. The total for the funds requested totaled around $100,000, which exceeded the program funding limit set by council at $75,000. Earlier this week, while discussing agenda material for an upcoming April 4th ag working group meeting, I was informed by our staff member Hannah Cam that she's already been contacted by 12 individuals wishing to participate in another funding uptake. So already we have a quarter of the 2024 applicant total waiting in the wings for the county to bring this idea forward again for 2025. So my observations are as follows. The biggest, in trying to set up this stewardship program, the biggest challenge, there's two sides of it. One is about the tree planting program is to get it, getting everyone on side and in agreement for both, both sides of the matter. It's taken a lot of effort and discussion and conversation amongst those who are in favor of planting trees to get them to support the program concept. Because everyone, people want to do the right thing, but everyone has their own versions of what the right thing should look like. So we've gotten that smoothed out. And we've, we've got a great success on the initial uptake of the program. But now, while that was going on, administering the first round of the uptake, we've since heard at the public meetings that there's people opposed, we've heard the opposition to the current tree bylaw and provisions of the official plan. So now we have the other side of the coin where people are vying to never plant trees again or they're threatening to rip up trees in every opportunity that they get. I'm not totally surprised by that, because I could foresee this scenario taking shape five years ago when the first public meetings for the draft official plan were, were started. So I realize I'm not the first county counselor to experience this phenomenon and I know I won't be the last one either. But I guess what I'm trying to say in closing is that anything that can be done to diffuse the situation and review, reduce any acrimony regarding the tree bylaw, tree management and future tree planting, that would be wholeheartedly welcome for myself again as the, for my position as the chair of the ag working group. And I think we have the beginnings, the humble beginnings of a very decent countywide tree planting support program. And it would be a shame for this program to become derailed before its full benefit and potential can be fully realized. So I just wanted to add those comments and observations to lend some support to Counselor Orr's request regarding the tree bylaw review. I think, I agree, there, there is some fine tuning and additional work that could be explored to try and make the situation better for everybody and reduce some of the misconceptions and some of the acrimony about something as simple as planting and looking after a tree. So I'll turn the floor back over to you, Warden, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? No, I just have a couple of comments from what I've heard around this table and, and I guess my thoughts. These connecting links, I have a real problem with these connecting links and Counselor McDermott brought this up. So you have a bush on one farm and the next bush isn't for two farms over. So now you've made two farms in between cultivated fields called what I call the connecting link. So you're designating them as a natural heritage, natural environment, or whatever you're designating them because they connect. I have a problem with that. If that's not wet, if that's, it still can be farmed. You talk about how simple it is for, you can still build. Well, yeah, it's simple, but it's going to cost me thousands of dollars to build. Because on my farm alone, we have a bush, it's designated wetland. There's a municipal ditch that goes around that 100 acres too. We wanted to build a house. Well, guess where we had to put the house? In the center of the farm. We talk around this table of conserving agriculture land and yet here we are having to put this house in the center of the farm. You have a laneway the full length of the farm almost to get this house in this little wee area where I don't have to do 1,000 studies that are going to cost me $1,000, thousands of dollars. So I, I still have a lot of concerns. These acreage that we're designating, and I heard that loud and clear at all four meetings, people are not happy that we're designating their land. I know you keep saying, oh, they can farm it, they can farm it. Yeah, they can farm it, but when they go to build something, it's going to be a major headache and a major cost. So I have trouble, I'm, I'm, and I said it a few minutes ago, I am having trouble. I cannot support 10,000 acres. That's like 10, 100 farms that we're designating into natural heritage. How did that happen in 25 years and all of a sudden it all became natural heritage? I guess that's my rant. But I do have a concern. I think if you go back to a public meeting and you go back with these 10,000 acres, you're going to have a mutiny the next time. Because the people are pretty upset that we're designating so much land, even though the policies are going to be there. Yeah, the, the, the planning department of the, of the day reads it, it's an interpretation. You read it one way, 10 years down the road, we might have somebody else reading it a totally different way. And then it's going to cause a whole lot more issues. With a stroke of the pen, you're going to make my farm into a natural heritage. And for me to get it out of there, I have to do thousands of dollars worth of studies to bring it back when it's not. So I don't know. The world's getting more complex all the time, just making it harder and harder for everybody to do anything on their farms. Counselor Orr?
It's my understanding that Upper Thames did the, the studies, the natural heritage, like they're the one, would we ever consider doing a peer review on that? Or is that just going to cost too much money and time?
So through the warden to Counselor Orr's question, the Perth Natural Heritage Systems Study was, was undertaken by Upper Thames in, and it was consistent, it was done consistently with the, and now Matt, you might have to help me. The ministry has a natural heritage study guide that they have to follow. Upper Thames was chosen to do the work at the time, that's my understanding, based on the fact that they had already established methodology, the same methodology, and had done it in Oxford, Huron, Middlesex, Stratford, London. And then right before Perth County undertook theirs, the process and methodology was peer reviewed at that time. And so then our study is based on that peer review of the methodology. And so I, I would say that I don't know that you're going to arrive at, at a different, any sort of different outcome if you had someone else come in and do it. Thanks for the answer.
Counselor Duncan?
At the risk of, excuse me, at the risk of dragging this on any longer, the numbers, the 10,000, excuse me, the 10,000 acre number, my understanding is that number is from 2019 till now. Do we have the number from the original 1999 official plan, I think it was 99, correct me if I'm wrong, what was natural environment designation then till now? Because I think that number is far more valuable than the number from 2019 till now. As, as to what were, what changes are being made to the, to the environment designation? Because I think a lot of it is land that was already designated. I'd like to know what the actual number of acreage change is.
Yes, so through you, Warden. I think I misspoke or, or sort of miscommunicated. So I believe that 10,000 number is from the current in effect mapping to the initial draft mapping that was provided earlier in this process. So it's not, it's not necessarily, it's not the change resulting from the earlier consultation that took place. I believe it is, it is that difference from the previous current in effect mapping versus the draft mapping that's presented now. So I apologize for that miscommunication there.
Okay, thank you. So I have one more. That 10,000 number, I seen two other numbers. One was 6,000 and change and one was 4,000 change. One was land in and one was land out. Is the 10,000? Is the 10,000 the total number, or is the 10,000 an aggregate of those numbers? Where the land in would only be about 6,000 if we took 4,000 out?
Through you, Warden, I'm not sure, I'm not sure about those numbers. I don't know, I'm not sure which, which numbers you're referencing and I'm not familiar with, with it to that level.
Yeah, I think some of the county staff should know because it was on one of our fact sheets.
And so through the Warden to the question, my understanding and this, it, it, I mean, I wasn't involved directly with the calculations, but my understanding was that those, the 6,000 and the 4,000 and then the 10,000, the 10,000 is the adjusted number from the, the ground truthing and the removal of the 1,000 tickets. But I can, I will confirm that for, for council.
Okay, I, I guess I'd, I hope we can get some more clarification on the exact numbers going forward. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Aitchison?
Yeah, just a quick follow up. Did I not read just lately where the Conservation Authority just recently issued some new mapping, or am I out in left field there? And a second point, I think before Matt was explaining they could give some examples or whatever, and after hearing Ward Naggetts describe her property, that might be the perfect place to have a look at and check the designations out and see just exactly what the restrictions were. Just a thought.
Councillor McDermott?
To councillor Orr, if you'd like to look at one of those manuals, I actually have one, I'm not sure if it's the most up to date one, but if you or anybody else would wish to look at one of those NMR manuals, I'd be more than happy to share.
That'd be great.
Okay, anyone else? Go ahead, if you want.
I, I did go through the effort with Lori Wolf to come up with a bylaw. I think Tyler potentially has it in front of him, so if you want to read it, you.
Yeah, absolutely. So through the Warden, the, the motion would be for, with respect to the county's forestry bylaw, is that council refer the county's forestry bylaw to the agricultural working group to undertake a detailed review and comparison with other county forestry bylaws, including Oxford, report back to council with recommendations. So this is a referral motion, so it's good at any point in time.
Okay, we have a mover, councillor Orr, a seconder, councillor McDermott. Any more comments or questions on that motion? Councillor Aitchison?
So you're referring that to the agriculture committee for review, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Should that also include some staff or some experts for the review?
So I need to get to that. So through, through the, through the Warden, there will be staff consideration, working with the agricultural working group. Hannah would be available, myself, planning department, to help with the consolidation of, of our thoughts and opinions and assist the egg working group.
Okay, councillor Duncan? Oh, you're muted.
I see only Oxford County is mentioned in the motion. I'd like to see that we conclude here in County and Wellington County in that motion as well.
Okay, are the mover and the seconder okay with that?
Absolutely.
Okay, have you added? Hey, anything else on that, councillor Tuncowski?
Through you, Warden, what's the proposed timeline to come back with an answer or to come to a conclusion to bring back to this council? Is there any thought to what the timeline is on that?
So through the Warden, there's nothing specific on this, it'll all be dependent upon when the next meeting would be called for the working group and when we can get in front to go through that. But there is no specific timeline on this.
Okay, well, the reason I ask, through you, Warden, the reason I ask is we typically are set up to meet quarterly. So I guess I'm just trying to get a sense of the urgency to get an answer back before this council in order to coordinate the effort with the other members of the, of the committee, as well as coordinate that task with the other tasks that we've already got on our agendas. Procedurally, just trying to sort out the logistics is the nature of my question.
So, so, so through the Warden, we could take a look at it. I believe that we could have a meeting at the call from Chair to, to have a meeting scheduled and attempt to look at this specific matter.
Okay, so we, we have, we have an April 4th meeting scheduled, but that's to do the follow up on the stewardship program, the 2024 follow up to set up the 2025 details. So this, this, what we're discussing now, this is going to take obviously more than one meeting, it will be several meetings. So, okay, no, that's fine, that's, we'll, we'll work with it. Thank you.
Councillor Aitchison?
Yeah, so we're including the municipalities right close around us. Sometimes you have to think outside the box. I'd like to see us go down and say maybe even add Chatham Kent's bylaws, et cetera, to ours. I know it's completely different than ours, but it would be interesting to compare not just our surrounding municipalities, but maybe take one from outside a little further away, say Chatham Kent.
So, so, so through, through the Warden to answer councillor, councillor Aitchison or address that comment, I think the idea is that multiple municipalities will be reviewed in this. Oxford was one that was just highlighted. So to take into consideration Oxford, Huron and Wellington, that doesn't exclude any other municipality and that full sum review would be undertaken at the egg working group meeting. I'd be happy for any suggestions that anybody does have, and if you'd like to email me with anyone that is in particular, I can pass that information off to the Chair of the committee.
Well, I'd like to see information from a little further away as well. And I'm going to say right now, I want to see Chatham Kent's, including in our information to decipher.
Okay, so add that to the list, is that okay with the mover and the seconder? Okay, and any other ones that people bring up as well?
I specifically brought up Oxford because they have an appeals process and I'm very interested in that.
Okay, anyone else? Any comments or questions before we vote? No, all in favor? Here. Okay, are there any more questions or comments on the report? Councillor Tuncowski?
Thanks, Warden, through you. I'll, I'll try and be as brief as possible. I guess my comments or concerns are going back to the December meeting of council when we first talked about the draft official plan. We went, or we tried to go through some kind of a mathematical exercise on percentages for low, medium and high density development, and we were struggling with that. I guess I'm more, more fixated on the idea that if population is to increase by, I believe it was 20,000 between now and the end of the study period, and we've allocated, I think it's 700 acres, whatever the acreage is for residential land, then just the simple math is number of people divided by number of acres, there's your density target. But there's your population density requirement. How you house those people will be more a function of what the market forces dictate in terms of the cost of the housing, but more importantly, the cost that the builders can provide it for. And I think that we're going to struggle trying to insist that, insist on certain percentages because the mark, we're trying to, we're trying to dictate to the marketplace what those percentages should be and which we can try to do that, but we're going to still struggle with it. The focus should be on X number, like defining our limits for our urban growth in each of the four lower tiers. There's your area, everyone's got it, has their area to work with and once you're full, you're full. Like I would hate to, I would be concerned to see in 20 years from now that whoever the successive councils will be, okay, let's go, let's go and get some more land and we're already under pressure to try and preserve the farmland as it is. So just, I guess what I'm trying to say is we need to contain the growth. But the idea that we're not going to try and go back later and change the boundary lines and add some more, just for the sake of changing the boundary lines. So that was the one comment I had. And the other item was about the electrical generation through the wind and the battery storage projects. Are we going to see any kind of language in the official plan to address things like land usage, siding of these projects, setback distances and that sort of thing? Are we going to see anything in our official plan that would address those in any greater detail?
Through you, Warden, with regard to wind power generation or battery storage facilities, the official plan includes land use compatibility policies, which provide a process for determining what the impacts of different land uses are on sensitive land uses. So that applies to something like a factory, manufacturing, warehousing, or, or anything like that located adjacent to homes or farms. And it would also apply to something like a wind turbine or any other kind of industrial power generation that might be proposed. So the, the standard there is the environmental, Ministry of Environment, land use compatibility guidelines, which would apply for any kind of, any kind of land use that would have potential impact like that.
Okay, I guess my follow up comment through you, Warden, is that, yeah, I, again, it goes back to preservation of farmland, like we want to preserve farmland, but when these project proponents try to situate these projects on farmland, that that puts the two aim, power generation, the aim of power generation is at odds with the land use for food production. And I, I struggle with, with how that's going to look like in the future. Like currently, the majority of the agricultural land ownership is still family based, but in five, 10, 15, 20 years, I assess there'd be a greater corporate ownership, less family ownership and greater corporate ownership, which could open the door to some of these developments on land that's currently in food production. So that was the reason for my question. I'm concerned about, about how the, how the farmland will be used in the future. Thanks.
Okay, anyone else? No, okay, we do have a motion. Before I read it, there are, it just talks about the revisions that's in the manager's report. What about the comments that have been made here this morning by councillors? Do you want that added in the motion that they take into consideration the, the items brought up by members of council this morning? Councillor Tuncowski? Yeah, and, okay, and also presented draft, a revised draft at a statutory public meeting. Do you want it to come to council first before it goes public meeting the next time? So that we're all on the same page before we get to that public meeting? I see a lot of heads nodding.
I think that'd be a great idea, Ward Naggetts. There's going to be nothing worse than going to public meeting and getting the backlash that you got with the lawsuits.
Oh, I know. So Tyler's doing his magic here.
Can we read it the full thing?
Sir, you go ahead and read it.
So through the Warden, motion to read that council receives the update on new draft official plan public consultation report, and that council receives a presentation from WSP regarding the 2024 public open house summary, and that council directs planning staff and WSP to undertake the recommended revisions to the new draft official plan outlining the manager's report and items brought forward by council to be presented as a revised draft at a future council meeting.
Okay, does that capture it all? Okay, we have a mover and a seconder, moved by councillor McDermott, seconded by councillor Smith. Any more comments or questions? All in favor? Carry. Okay, thanks, Matt, thanks Andrea. Being that it's, we've had this for an hour and a half, I think we're going to take a five minute leg stretch and then we'll move on to the rest of our meeting. We're back and we're moving on to our next item on our agenda under Planning Services and it's a Listowel OPA 33, 670 Main Street East. And we have Nathan with us this morning to, over the report. Nathan, welcome to County Council and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Ward Naggetts and County Council. I do have a short presentation queued up for you on this report, so I'll go through it with you. So this is for official plan amendment, Listowel Official Plan Amendment number 33. The owner is HAE Listowel Inc. and the applicant and agent is actually Ardaloff Engineering Incorporated, so that should be changed a little bit, but it's in the report package. The location is Plan 194, Part Log J, registered Plan 44R, 45, 45, Part 1 in the Listowel Ward and Misspatty of North Perth. And then there's just the star identifying the subject property on the area of Listowel there on the east side of town. Just a couple of photos for you to reference. So one is the report photo that was included in the package, that just outlines the area where the official plan amendment is being subject to. So you'll see the KFC is located to the east, there is the Salvation Army church across the way, and then Listowel Chrysler is at the rear. Just a subject showing a bit of an outline there. And then also on the left, you'll see a couple of other businesses and property, Lafarge is located to the south, Listowel High School is located to the west there. Just, we've had some discussions with the applicant, so this is the final proposal that came to North Perth Council for consideration. So it just shows the proposed structure. It is a three story structure that's being proposed. It's in line with the existing KFC, so it does meet kind of the setbacks of the existing building that's along there. So as you drive along, everything will be kind of in line. Parking's at the rear and the side, there is a store. What they're asking for is approximately four units of commercial on the frontage, residential in the rear, and then residential on the second and third story. And then the official plan amendment is to include it for residential in that subject property, the highway commercial zone. Next slide, please. The area outlined in blue is that of the report photo again, so as I mentioned, the official plan amendment number 33. So the request currently is that it be allowed to have residential in the highway commercial area. Currently in Listowel, the residential is not permitted in the highway commercial area. We are seeing some of that transitional zone happen in other areas of Listowel, but this area still is a highway commercial designation, it does not allow for that, and that's where they're asking for the exemption of this official plan. Next slide, please. Just a couple of pictures of the current property. Right now it's underutilized, it's vacant. There is some storage sheds temporarily located there, more as an advertising and sales display area. So if you drive along, so those would all be removed, subject to the new building going in. Next slide, please. In support of the application, there was a noise study that was done and completed because there is the Lafarge property located to the south. There was some concerns that raised about compatibility in that area, so there was a noise study that completed, as well as there was a draft site plan that's been done, that was included in the report package. And there was a brief stormwater and functional servicing, so the functional servicing is just sewer and water connections, just a brief that was done up. That would be finally addressed through site plan stage, not this time. Next slide, please. Public comments on this file, so Lafarge did provide some original comments, they were satisfied that the noise study been completed. And then also there is some inclusion for warning clauses and things like that in the purchase and sales agreement coming in the future for those houses. So those folks would be notified that there is industrial operations happening around there. They were satisfied with that being included in there. There is some question around the wording, but overall they were okay with the approach being included. Public provided comments on the parking, municipal services, traffic setbacks in design, those were responding to the public, we haven't had any concerns or complaints raised further. So all the parking is addressed onsite, there is no offsite parking being considered or proposed, so everything included onsite. Staff and agency comments, B and Ross is the reviewer on the file, they're just asking for a final functional servicing stormwater report to be included at the site plan stage. And then public works was, was fine with the road access through there, so no left hand turn lanes, no additional requirements or upgrades required to the main street. Next slide, please. Just for council's consideration, Bill 23 did remove site plan design, so this is being done. So this is being done through the site plan review process for staff, so it doesn't, it doesn't give the option for council to weigh on the site plan design. However, it does reduce the setback, so it is in line with the existing buildings and structures there. So that's something that we did consider. Parking is not proposed to be reduced. They are remaining the parking numbers that meets the zoning bylaw, and they will be accommodated onsite. Warning clauses included in the noise study for the units, and then AC option, so air conditioning will be provided for those future residents, so they don't have to open their windows if there's ever, like, a noisy thing happen in the summertime. And then finally, development requires site plan approval stage through the engineering and design process, just because it is over 10 units through there, and commercials as well. Next slide, please. Opening the zoning, so the official plan does limit it to 20 residential units. That's in line with the parking request. Landscape open spaces close to the 20%. It's approximately 18%, so that's addressed the zoning bylaw. Front yard does meet the existing, or front yard setback does meet the buildings that are there now on the adjacent lands, so that's more in line, parking accommodated inside. And it is a slight density increase for Listowel because it is a three-story building being proposed, so it's a little bit higher density through there. And then finally, North Perth Council has supported and approved the official plan bylaw out there February 26, 2024. So North Perth Council did support both the official plan and zoning at this time. Next slide, please. The lastly is my recommendation, that council receives the Listowel Official Plan number 33, HAE Listowel Inc., 670 Main Street East, report submitted by Argloff Engineering and Development, and that council approves the Listowel Official Plan Amendment number 33 to the Listowel Official Plan affecting lands described as Plan 194, Part Log J, RP 44R 4545, Part 1, Listowel Ward in the municipality of North Perth. And I'm happy to address or answer any questions at this time.
Okay, thanks, Nathan. Questions of the report? Think any of you of these guys have their hands up? Harder to see them when they're shrinking. There we go. Okay, if there's no questions, then we do have a motion. That council receives the Listowel OPA number 33, HAE Listowel Inc., 670 Main Street East, report submitted by Argloff Engineering and Development, and that council approves the Listowel Official Plan Amendment number 33 to the Listowel Official Plan affecting lands described as Plan 194, Part Log J, RP 44R 4545, Part 1, Listowel Ward in the municipality of North Perth. We have a mover and a seconder, moved by councillor Duncan, seconded by councillor McDermott. Any more questions or comments? All in favor? Carried. Okay, thanks, Nathan. Now we're going to move to economic development and tourism, and this morning we have Maggie, Ashley, and Justin with us. Morning, and welcome, and yours.
Thank you. So through the warden, I will kick things off for our economic development, tourism, and transportation bi-monthly update. You can go to the next slide, please. So before we jump into our project updates, we want to bring to council's attention that we currently have 12 funding applications submitted to various regional, provincial, and federal funding organizations, including a $1.3 million request to Immigration, Refugees, and Citizenship Canada for a local immigration partnership that would span multiple years. And all of these applications at this time are unconfirmed and still pending. Next slide.
Great, thanks, Ashley. So in terms of our business expansion and expansion, so we do continue to follow up with our survey respondents from last year. Again, the purpose of that survey was less about big, kind of broader themes and more in terms of individual resources. So I continue to share those resources that were requested by businesses individually. Some of the more common themes that we heard of it were requests for opportunities to network with other businesses, that feeling of kind of maintaining and reforming business connections, funding information, so information on access to available funding programs. We've been sending more recently information on the My Main Street program to those businesses who might qualify to help them apply for those programs, and then advertising, marketing assistance. So continuing to help businesses, especially those who don't, maybe they're not tourism, or maybe they don't have their own marketing, those off-the-main-street businesses, to help them reach a wider audience. So I shared on the screen here a couple of the videos we did from the Business Tour, which are a great way to promote our businesses, and those, those videos had over 362 total engagements on those, just the last two. So Business Tour can be a great way to do that. We're finding other ways, many business features, other profiles of businesses to help, help our businesses advertise and market. And in terms of our digital mainstream program, so unfortunately, this program will be ending on March 31st. Over the course of program, we had been able to access over $99,000 in funding to support this program, and what that means is we had four special service squad team members, including our most recent Ricky and Eileen, who've been able to help businesses in Perth County, 159 businesses access over $70,000 in grant funding. So really want to, you know, thank them for their work, and that service will be slightly missed, but we are developing digital resources page on our website to help bridge that gap and continue to offer that service. Next slide, please. And then finally, for me on people and workforce, so we are making a return to job fair, something we did a lot during before the pandemic. We will be, our first kind of foray back into that will be on March 27th at the Job Fair Canada in Kitchener. And through this, we'll be promoting available opportunities. I have an open call to any business who has opportunities to continue to update those through the connected job platform, which aggregates job postings from most of the major job posting websites. We're gonna be sharing available opportunities in Perth County, and also, on extent, open opportunity to businesses who want to partner with us to attend our booth, be a partner at our booth, and promote opportunities to join us at any of our future job fairs, including on March 27th. So that's it for me, and then I will pass off to Maggie, I believe.
Thank you, Maggie, Ashley.
No worries. So we've been very busy this spring and winter launching strategic advertising, preparing our 2024 Tourism Brochure, surveying businesses to inform our 2024 developments and beyond. On the screen today, you'll see an example of our 2024 ad creative, which focuses on signature experiences that are launched through our Discover More Adventures program. We have two additions planned so far for 2024 to this program, which are apple picking at Apple Bottom Orchards in North Perth, and wine and cider sampling at the Perth Farmhouse in Perth East. I'm really excited about both of these additions, as both an apple orchard pick-your-own and winery are really highly requested tourism experiences. The Perth Farmhouse Winery is Perth County's first winery, so extra exciting. And the owners, Steve and Casey, have truly embraced the spirit of collaboration through our Discover More Adventures program. So the flight holder you'll see on the screen here, they use Bob at Windbreak Farms Windbreak to create that for them, and he is, they met him through our Discover More Adventures program. Not pictured, but they're going to be offering grazing boxes, so food items that people can have who are coming there for the wine experience. And with that, they've partnered with Lynn River Farms, who they met through the Discover More Adventures program. So we're really happy to see that collaboration piece starting to come together with the Signature Experience program. And we invite you to watch our socials and our website in the coming weeks and months as we help this business prepare for their grand opening. That's it for me.
So, thank you. So through the warden, in terms of a very brief transportation update, I'm very happy to report that PC-connected ridership is continuing to grow exponentially. So despite February being a short month, it was actually record-breaking for us, servicing a total of 641 rides on the Roll Route A. So this is 100 more rides than January, the previous month, and three times the amount of ridership than in February of last year. So really great to see. And in order to continue to move on this positive growth trend, we are focusing on continuous marketing and outreach efforts moving forward. As you are all aware, I believe, we have recently received additional funding from the Community Transportation Grant Program that will support our project to the end of the pilot period. And as we do enter into our last year of the pilot project, we are focusing heavily on sustainability planning, and we will be bringing a report forward in May that provides a more thorough picture of the impact of this service and continuing to operate it beyond March 2025. So that is all for me. Next slide, please. And with that, our economic development, tourism, and transportation report is before you all, and we welcome any questions we have.
Good, thank you. Any questions of the report? Councillor McDermott?
Page 117, there's Perth East Touring Initiative Group transitioning from a community organization to Perth East Committee of Council. In other cities, do they usually make that a committee of council, or are they usually something separate from a council?
Yeah, so I can speak to that as the kind of the staff person on that, as part of that group. So I think part of the process is looking at, part of the report that Perth East is bringing back will be about what other communities have done, whether they have a committee council or not. And there are advantages, disadvantages, obviously, to both. So I think that's part of that report will be, I know it's the council recommended, that staff report that on that side of that report, and it will address what others are doing, what the recommendation is.
Okay, so it'll be a report about what other communities.
At least, so, yes.
Okay, well, that's fine. Councillor Orr?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for all the grant applications. If half of them come through, that would just be absolutely amazing. Also, very impressed with what I'm hearing for the collaboration with chamber business programs. I think that's really important, that we are working together. So I congratulate you on that. And I also just wondered where this Perth Farmhouse is.
Sure. So through the warden, I am terrible at remembering road names, but it's on the border of Perth County, on a curve whose name I can't remember, and on the other side is Waterloo region, about eight minutes north of Shakespeare. Can anyone help me out with this better than I'm doing now?
Popping.
Correct, yes.
Popping. Okay, that's great. I will seek them out.
Okay, any other comments or questions? If not, we have a motion that council receives the Economic Development, Tourism, and Transportation Quarter One Update Report, March 2024 Report for Information, moved by councillor McKenzie, seconded by councillor Orr. All in favor? Carried. Thank you very much. Before you run away, I know this is Ashley's last meeting. We thank you for all that you've done for Perth County. We wish you all the best in your future endeavors, so we will miss you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to go to Corporate Services, and we have our February update and, I believe, an X.
Good morning. Good morning. As Rhonda mentioned, the report before you provides an overview of projects in Corporate Services from the month of February 2024. A few highlights, Legislative Services submitted the annual report to the Information and Privacy Commissioner, Ron Terrill, regarding the county's freedom of information requests for 2023. A few public talks that took place. Our Archives Technician, Jen Giorgio, gave a public talk on how to digitize family photographs at the Perth East Public Library, and that was very well received and will be repeated. Also, I was a speaker at the Ontario Legal Conference on Municipal Planning and Environmental Law. And a few updates, we are continuing to monitor what's happening in other jurisdictions regarding school bus arm cameras. And I recently spoke with Renee Bouchard. She's the Executive Director of Sudbury Student Services Consortium. So Sudbury did do a pilot project with stop-arm cameras, and I just want to note with respect to that project, that it actually was not Sudbury itself that paid for that project, it wasn't the municipality, but rather the student consortium. So I did have a conversation with her with regards to their findings related to the program, and they did have some issues with respect to the provider for the cameras that they were using, and they are switching providers. And I also spoke with Vera Mobility, who I previously spoke to regarding the costs of cameras and setups, and they are looking to break into the Canadian market. They are a US company with a Canadian arm, and I just had a conversation with them with regards to costs. Regarding the backlog in POA resulting from court closures, a very brief update, POA, as you already know, and was reported at last council, has two lit court dates coming up, one of which is next week, and we are seeing new justices of the peace attending at Perth County for training. So we're hopeful that we'll be able to get through some of the backlog that resulted from the lack of judicial resources and those court closures. GIS, IT, and Legislative Services provided assistance and supported the open houses for the new official public, for the new, sorry, the new official plan. GIS is collaborating with West Perth to develop a self-serve asset management process and dashboards. And speaking of asset management, Finance and Public Works have been working together to update our asset management plan to include levels of service, which is required to be completed by July 1st of this year. A few highlights for the upcoming months, Legislative Services will be working with the Forestry Inspector to update the county's forestry webpage, so it is timely, today's motion, that we can include additional information in the review. And Legislative Services will also work with the warden, finance, and our communications officer to begin the process of awarding grants from the 2024 Cultivating Opportunity Grants Program. So subject to any questions, that is my report.
Okay, questions of the report? Oh, okay, see no questions. We have a motion that council receives the Corporate Services February 2024 Update for Information, moved by councillor Kastenberg, seconded by councillor Trunkowski. All in favor? Carried. Okay, now we're going to move to Public Works, and first on Public Works is a tender result for road rehabilitation called cycle and hot mixing. John and Bill with us this morning. Free gentlemen, and the floor is yours.
Good morning, council. Thank you. Through you, Ward Naggetts. This report is regarding tender results for Perth Line 44 rehabilitation from Perth Road 135 West to Road 160. The project mainly includes cold-in-place recycling and hot mixed asphalt resurfacing and related construction incidentals. We issued the tender documents on the county's online bidding system. We had 17 plant acres, and there were seven final submissions. The results of the tender submissions are tabled within the report, and the low bid was received from Branco Construction valued at $1,726,910. Sorry, let me say that again, $1,726,910.97. We are recommending that council award the bid to, the low bidder being Branco Construction. The bid is within the project budget, and we are familiar with the workmanship of the contractors. If there's any questions, happy to answer.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of the report? See no questions. We have a motion that council receives a tender results 2024-031-01, Perth Line 44 Road Rehabilitation Cold Recycle and Hot Mixed Paving Report, and that council award tender 2024-031-01 to Branco Construction, and that council authorized the warden and the clerk to execute the agreement between the Corporation of the County of Perth and Branco Construction. By councillor Trunkowski, seconded by councillor Smith. All in favor? Carried. Okay, I do believe that we have a question for John and for Phil from councillor Kastenberg. So councillor Kastenberg?
Thank you. Less a question and more a request of council for.
Just give it a sec there.
Oh, yes.
There we go.
There we go. More, less a question, more a request of council. Council will recall that at our last meeting, we received a report on speed changes or calming efforts in Kurtsville, which is on a county road that is in the municipality of North Perth. We received that report for information. Part of that report was a comment from the manager suggesting that there may be an opportunity to consider the scope of a countywide speed sign placement in various county roads where there is intersection with humans and traffic. And so today, I would like to seek county council's endorsement of a resolution to take the manager up on that suggestion. And if I might, Ward Naggetts, I'll read the resolution that I propose to that end as follows, be it resolved that council direct staff to prepare a detailed report that would outline a framework for implementation of a fixed speed detection and warning sign systems for speed calming. a fixed speed detection and warning sign systems for speed calming and data collection purposes, including program costs and phasing approaches. I seek council's attention to this resolution.
Okay. Any comments or questions from members of council? So when you talk about a framework, Todd, you... How do I word this? You want it to be a done deal, or you want staff to bring a report back of what it would be, what it all entail?
Thanks, Warden, for the question. I'm seeking a report on what a program would look like and cost.
Okay, all right, just for clarification. John or Bill, do you have any comments you wish to make?
I think the resolution is suitable for us to bring back report in that manner.
Okay, do we have a seconder for that? Councillor McKenzie? Can you send that resolution to Tyler?
Already done.
You have?
Yeah.
Is there any more questions on that? All in favor? Carried. Okay, do we have any council reports? No? Oh, thanks, gentlemen. Okay, then bylaws, have that bylaw 3966, staff 2024 be read a first, second, and third time, and finally passed as 21st day of March 2024. Need a mover and a seconder, moved by councillor Orr, second by councillor McDermott, all in favor? Carried. Do we have any notice of motions? Any other business? Any announcements? We do not have a closed session this morning, so then we will go to our confirmatory bylaw. It reads that bylaw 3967, staff 2024 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council of the Corporation of the County of Perth at its regular meeting held March 21st, 2024, is read a first, second, and third time, and finally passed March 21st, 2024. We have a movement to seconder for that, moved by councillor Herson, second by councillor McDermott, all in favor? Carried. And then the last motion of the morning is that council meeting be adjourned at 11:06 AM. Moved by councillor McKenzie, second by councillor McDermott, all in favor? Carried. Thanks, everyone. Great discussion this morning, enjoy the rest of your day, and we'll see you later.